Fifty-five Station Road. So with that, we'll begin. First item is twenty-one, sorry, twenty-seventeen dash thirty-one, Christianado Hermits Road.
John Malone representing Christian Auto. We're here, we were asking for a modification to an approved site plan to allow us to build the house and the force main, both force mains simultaneously. We had talked about that at the last meeting, and we have received Westchester Health Department approval for the force main.
Okay. And I think the other thing is that the town of Greenburg is now going to require a
Performance bond?
A performance bond?
Yes. Yeah, they're requiring that as part of their permanent.
Well, now, the town is requiring itself.
As long as one person has a performance bond, you're sure it'll get done.
Right.
And do you have the bond?
We have a signed agreement with the bond included. I mean, I don't know if you guys can see that, but it doesn't, I'm seeing here that it doesn't have the bond indicated in it, but we have a bond. We've negotiated a bond with the contract.
What will we find out from the town of Greenburg?
Yeah, I mean, you have to get the.
Yeah, we'll get the.
Make it easier when you get the Greenburg permit.
Right.
Okay. Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No. Mary Ann, I think you.
Yeah, I did the resolution. I won't bother reading the whole resolution. I'll just tell you what was changed. On the second page, there's a whereas added, whereas the town of Greenburg has required applicant to post a completion bond for installation of the sewer. And then, in the resolve, previously it said that a building permit couldn't issue until the sewer was complete, and that's been changed to read a certificate of occupancy will not be issued until the sewer is installed and its operation approved by the Westchester County Department of Health. And then, a revised date. Other than that, it's the same.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is twenty-eighteen dash twenty, Barbara Cohen, twenty-one Matheson Park.
John Malone, represents Malone Architecture, representing Barbara and Raj Cohen. We have, this is a project for a small garden to the north of the house. We picked up some modifications to address comments from the engineer. I think that's all we had on it.
Right. Yeah, I don't think there are any further comments, right? You have no further comments? That's correct. So is there any comments from anyone on the bill? Anyone in the audience? I don't think, Mary Ann, you have a resolution on this matter?
Whereas in November twenty-eighteen, Barbara Cohen applied for site development plan approval to construct a small garden, including blue stone steps and a brick walkway of property at twenty-one Matheson Park, which is located in the Villages View Preservation District. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and listed several items which were adequately addressed as subsequent submission. The Villages Landscape Consultant reviewed the plans, had no recommendations. The planning board held a public hearing on the application on November seventh and February sixth. The improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River. It's a type-two action under SEACRA. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Cohen Courtyard, twenty-one Matheson Park, prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture.
Do you have a motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two for two. Next item is twenty-nineteen dash oh-two, Amy Payne, eighteen North Continent Street.
Good evening. My name is Lizette Elise. My name is Lizette Elise, representing Amy Payne from Christina Griffin Architects. We received comments from Han Engineering, which we were unable to answer before the original planning board meeting, but we were able to answer those, which we submitted. I received additional comments from Han Engineering this evening, and I was also able to answer those, so, but I'll go over the entire submission again. Originally, we had proposed to add a deck and remove the existing bilko and put in a concealed bilko, which was not accepted. So we have decided to move ahead with replacing the existing blue stone patio, which is currently not part of the impervious surface area, so we'll need a variance for that. But it's, there's an existing blue stone patio, so we decided we would just replace that, repair it, replace the bilko door. We are adding sliders from the new dining room, and there will be a tread step down. There is a new cedar fence that was approved by ARB. These are photos of the existing house.
Can you show, go back to the site plan and show where the dancing units or the blowers are for the central AC?
Yes. So the air condensers, we were able to find very compact air condensers that we can hang off the wall. They extend beyond the wall only sixteen inches, and they do not touch the ground. And they are here, underneath that existing window.
That's the front of the house, right?
This is the back of the house. Yeah, this is the back, and they face the backyard. If I go, let me just take you back to the site plan briefly, just to clarify. So the existing blue stone patio is not legal. So we are removing the existing concrete walks, because we are going to be, we are going to exceed the impervious surface area by two percent. The entire coverage exceeds, it's exceeded by seventy-eight point seven percent of the allowable area, but two percent greater than the documented existing. And it needs all the setbacks, but we know we do need a variance for that.
Any comments from anyone on the board on this matter?
Wasn't there a question coming from the point of the neighbors about windows and being easy?
Right, but I think that was, yeah, but I think that's a matter to be, window between the neighbor and.
Windows?
Well, there's a question about something going on in somebody else's property in order to replace the window.
Yeah, it's not really a planning board matter, it's a matter between the neighbors.
Replacement windows are done from the inside. They don't need to go on the side.
Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No? Mary Ann, you have a resolution?
Yeah. In January twenty-nineteen, Amy Payne applied for site development plan approval to construct a new deck and extend a concrete slab to accommodate new air condensers at a property at eighteen North Continent Street, which is located in the View Preservation District. The plans were modified to eliminate the deck and concrete slab and replace an undocumented blue stone patio and install wall-mounted air conditioners, whereas the improvements require a variance for coverage. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in memorandum dated January eighth and February fourth, had only minor issues with the drawings. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on January ninth and February fifth. The proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties. It's a type-two action under SEACRA, therefore requires no environmental review. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Renovations to the Payne Residence Prepared by Christina Griffin Architect." The drawings are specified. Subject to, one, receiving a variance from the zoning board, a coverage variance from the zoning board of appeals. Two, complying with the items in the February fourth, twenty-nineteen Han memorandum. And three, ensuring that the air conditioners comply with the noise limit in the village code, which will be tested prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Second? All in favor?
Good evening. My name is Elliot Senor, Office of Gabriel Senor, Engineer Surveyor in Hartsdale. This is an ongoing application, as you know. It was first created by Mark McGarvey, and we've finished it up. Mike is still involved with the project. We did get some comments today from the consultants. So we do acknowledge that we are going to need, we are over coverage and are going to need some variances. As far as the narrative and these other things, I don't know if I could go through them one at a time, or are you prepared to make those changes as required?
I don't think you have to go through all of them, but I think there are just several that I thought should be highlighted. First, with regard to the coverage and your being over coverage, I think you're like, what's it, twenty-six or twenty-nine percent over the coverage? You're thirty, I'm sorry, thirty-nine percent. This has been, this project's been ongoing for a number of months, and originally when you came in, or previous consultants came in, you were over on the FAR also, and I saw that, and we had asked you to reduce the FAR, and they did, but we didn't have all the coverage information originally, as far. Now that you have the coverage, I think there's still some issues here, because the coverage on, coverage includes a new patio that's being proposed in the backyard.
Correct.
And that patio is really in the root structure of a major tree that's on the neighboring property. And if you really want to look at one, which would be helpful, is really just removing that patio. And if you're not going to remove it, then you really have to shift it to the east side of the.
That was one of the comments that we see there, and so in looking at that, there is a stairway that comes off of, there is a door and a stairway that comes off of the house. And so I think if we were to shift the patio to be more in line with the steps and the door coming out, it's going to shift, it's going to shift it a good ten feet to the right, and it won't impact, you know, it'll, it'll impact just a short piece of that root zone, so we're not going to have any of that.
I would suggest you take a look at moving it as far as.
No, we need to get to the stair, you know, to the stair and the door.
That tree is, again, I was out there with the, with our consulting landscape architect, and we looked at this. It's a major tree that's on the neighboring property, so what you're going to be doing is impacting the roots to that tree, which are in your backyard.
Right, and we're, you know, as we show the drip line, we're outside that, but I understand the concern, and so we, I don't think we have a problem moving the patio over, maybe cutting a piece off the corner, but we're not against shifting it.
That's one. The other item was to, there are two trees, two existing trees on the west side of the property facing Irving Place, on the west side of the.
On the west side, in there. These two, and then running the right away.
Yes. Again, I think you have to take certain measures to make sure that those trees are not impacted during construction, and I think there are comments by our landscape architect consultant on that. And the third item was, again, the impact of, this house is closer to the street than any of the houses that are around it. And as you drive up Riverview Road and come to the stop sign right at the corner of Irving Place and Riverview Road, you're looking right at that house. And there were, you can see the remains of hedges or some sort of plants that were planted around the corner from Irving Place around onto Riverview Road. They've all been removed except for one. And I think you really need to look at replanting something out there that will soften the view of that house as you're driving up Riverview Road. Again, because it's so close to the road. If you look around, all the houses are stepped back much farther, or they're so heavily landscaped that you really can't see them.
Yeah, I talked to the landscape architect tonight after I received the comments, and he's going to make improvements.
Okay, very good. Any other comments from any of the board members on this? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No? Okay, we're going to think then, what you can do then is make those changes and come back, and then you should, as long as they're okay at that point, then you should be okay to go to the ZBA at that point.
We can't, because don't normally come back, would we normally come back after we go to the ZBA? I mean, in other towns, and I helped in Nervington for a while, but in other towns, you usually go to the ZBA, you know, you get some sort of, you know, referral, and then we come back here for a final.
Well, and here in the Village, I think the ZBA relies upon the planning board to, to some extent, to, you know, make the comments and make the changes ahead of time, so they, they're looking at something that's pretty close to final. Because otherwise, it'd go back and forth. They make changes, then you come back here, and we don't like.
Yeah, and I mean, the landscaping, I thought, was some minor changes in moving it.
Well, it impacts the coverage. Again, and while you want to move that patio, I would, I would look at maybe reducing it. If you're thirty-nine percent over the permitted coverage, the ZBA may have a problem with that, and we're going to leave that up to them.
And I think one of the comments was in terms of comparing it to the neighboring properties, and we did an analysis, and we're in keeping, we're not as over coverage as the other lots surrounding us. I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, but also, these other percentages don't include items like walkways and air conditioning platforms and stuff, because these were taken from the property cards of, on record, which doesn't include walkways and other things like that, so.
Understood, but you also, again, where your coverage is, you're impacting a tree on a neighbor's property, so you can, you can either try and move it far enough away, or you can just remove it.
Okay.
So, okay, we'll see you next month then.
All right.
Okay. Next item is twenty-nineteen dash oh-eight, Abbott House, one hundred North Broadway.
Hi. James Cowan, CEO of Abbott House, coming before you request the renewal of our five-year special use permit.
That's it? There are no changes to the existing permit?
No, anything we've improved the property.
And, and there have been, there are no issues with the neighbors? No major issues? Any comments from any members of the board?
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I started there six years ago and came for my first permit with Mary Ann Sussman, my friend Martha Rochelle. And as a new CEO, I didn't expect things to be quite as nice and workable. When I went to the police station, introduced myself, they said, oh, yeah, we don't have a house, if you need anything, call us. The building department would come up to inspect the place. I say, you need anything? Yeah, this needs to be done, that needs to be, and we said, okay. The neighbors have been good. We try to maintain the streets to the degree we can and be good neighbors, and it's been a very positive experience, and that was not something I was expecting, given the business that I'm in, working with children and different populations. So I know this may not be the place, but I wanted to use the opportunity to say thank you to you all, and you can let your departments know that we feel things are going very well. Thank you.
Well, that has been a good neighbor for many years.
Thank you. I'd like to give this paper to you, or you already have it? I'm just carrying a copy.
Oh, no, we, we.
You have everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, wait a minute.
How am I supposed to do this?
No, 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 you have to, there wasn't a public hearing.
Next month.
For next month, yeah.
More six, I'm total five.
So you can't hold on until next month.
Right, right, we're not voting out tonight, but just come back next month. Yes, on more six.
Yeah.
All right. Next. Next item is twenty-nineteen dash oh-seven, Richard and Genevieve Dormant, forty-seven
John Malone, Ferguson Malone Architecture, representing the Dormants. This is a project for, in addition to an existing house, sort of a nineteen-eighties colonial that has a, an odd split level condition that I think was probably the result of them running into rock when it was originally built, and rather than take the rock out, they sort of slipped half the house up, so the front elevation of the house looks like it's a colonial, and they almost bumped into the rock and sort of slips in. So there's a complexity to the plans that shows sort of, we, like, split level, so that's just sort of the explanation of what we're doing there. The project is to expand the rear portion of the house to add a master bedroom above, a true master bedroom, and to add a, expand an existing family room. And then, there's also a kitchen renovation and a living room. We received comments from Han. I think we understand most of them. There was a few questions that maybe we could review while you're here in terms of how you'd like to calculate FAR, which is the first.
We can do that offline, basically, on the coverage.
So the, yeah, do you want to?
We can do that offline. I think you might go over the site plan, though, John.
Yeah.
Of the access to the rear yard.
Right.
You know, there's a number of issues with trees that are there and preserving them, and how are you going to deal with that, trying to get access to the backyard? What kind of equipment is going to be used?
Right. So that's where, I don't know if you want to go through. Let's just focus on the actual issues. So in terms of the civil site plans, I don't know if this is hard to read. Do you want to look at, we can just look at the artificial.
You need to look at that sheet that you.
The civil.
Because there's, there's an issue that's going to come up later.
Okay. So if you guys would look at it, so the deck, the, I mean, the location, it says, the way that Hudson Engineering produces their drawings, they leave the existing underneath the proposed. I find it confusing, so as a presentation drawing, I wouldn't use it, but right here where it says wood deck, this is the extent of our proposed addition on the two-story portion. This area here is the one-story addition that it had in the presentation, and it was my room. So the limited, what we're showing here is the new Coltech system in this area, material storage and, you know, temporary soil storage in this area. The comment about how to access the yard, you know, the appropriate way to access, I think would be from, you know, just going around this way and then protecting everything on this side to get around. I think we should just revise the drawing to, to show that more clearly than coming through here. I mean, I don't see, there's a flagstone walk that could be protected, you know, they could do plywood or something and probably protect.
Yeah, I mean, just as long as you think it's, if you think it's wide enough, because again, when I was out there looking at it, it looked like, I thought about the same thing, but then when I saw it, it looked like it was awfully tight on that side of the property. Again, depending on the type of equipment, would you need to get like a small, you know, a small backhoe out there to.
It wasn't going to be an additional basement. It was going to be, you know, crawl or slavon, you know, it was going to be crawl actually. It's not really, because this portion is already elevated, half-story up, the foundation there would basically be at grade, and it would be crawl, so, you know, foundations would be forty-two inches down.
So, so what you're saying, if you're going around the bottom, that construction driveway that's up there, that's not going to be there?
Well, this is, this is just a discussion. Like, this one, if there are real concerns about this, we can just work to protect these, you know, to protect the trees going around this way, or the alternative is to go this
On a later sheet, when you show trees, there's a tree right in the middle of that temporary driveway.
A tree through here, or there?
Right, right in the middle of the hash.
The construction.
Oh, well, that's the issue. We're not proposing to take any trees down in that front area.
I think some, some trees have already been taken down, because you have, they have a tree, there's a tree out front.
So there's a large, there was a tree right here, twelve inches, that's still showing on a survey that they had taken down with a separate permit before we were involved. So that's not there. If there's another.
Look, go to the other.
You're saying on the tree protection sheet.
And you're taking trees down that seem to have nothing to do with the, that's not it. Yeah, it is it.
Yes, I think there were trees that were taken down previously, Caesar. You're right, that, that had nothing to do with the construction, but they were, they had a tree permit to.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, but the, the trees are, right.
You're talking about this, this tree, TR two, which should be this tree here.
And there were other trees in that, in that construction driveway.
So there, you know, the driveway is showing going this way between these plantings right here, so there's a, you know, one, I don't know what's here.
Well, I think also, Avalance, we've already made a recommendation that there's a very large, I think it's a rotted, was it a tulip tree or a rose dentrum bush that's right up against the house? And she says it looks like it's in bad condition to begin with, and you might want to consider taking that out as part of this, which would make access a little easier going around the west side of the house.
Right.
But then still make sure that you have, you have adequate protection for the existing trees that are to remain there. There are a number of evergreens out there.
Right.
Should we, if we're going to really decide which side of the house is going to.
Well, I mean, I think this side could work unless there was something.
No, I think it can too, based on the recommendations that Suzanne Nolan has made.
Right, right. We can address those.
I think if you do that, if you protect the trees out there, you may look at removing that one right at the corner of the house, and then, you know, doing some replanting once you're done, right? You know, you have some proposed towards the backyard where the new addition will be, especially looking into your neighbor's rear.
Right, we increased the screening there so we can respond to her comments on that, and, you know, I'm not, I think, well, we can have a conversation with Suzanne offline. We were treating the mitigation of any removals, you know, the tree removals were ahead of this project, so I think she's sort of implying that those tree, they might be, might request mitigation for.
Yes, she did.
Those previous tree removals. I mean, I can talk to Suzanne, you know, and talk to the client and see what, you know, what we can agree to on that.
Would you adequately show or correctly show what trees you're planning to take down?
We weren't taking out anything.
So why are some of those on the other side plan shown as, we're being moved?
We're showing them as trees that have been recently removed that are still showing up in the survey.
Okay, so there's a note there that says these will apply a separate application.
Yeah, yeah. So we weren't planning to remove any additional trees. In terms of the scale, you're looking for a neighborhood analysis to determine where we're relative to FAR. In terms of revising the coverage numbers.
I'll circle, I'm a planner, but I typically.
Yeah, I mean, there's stuff that, there's basically stuff we're showing that was on the survey that has never been documented, so we'll.
Yeah, I'll get it off the survey.
We're going to adjust the starting point, as opposed to, I think all of the stuff is coming out, though, right?
Yeah, it's coming out, but it's.
It's the starting point.
Changes your percentages of decrease.
Right, got it.
I think all the other.
You're taking them back.
Any comments from anyone on the board?
The trees next to the driveway on both sides, they're very, very tight. I don't know how you're going to get through there. And in the back, it's, you've got a whole row of evergreens that, so there's access.
The disturbance area, we're going to try to keep relatively tight again. In terms of the excavation associated with something like that, it doesn't have to be, you know, the spoils and the work and the excavation, once you get your equipment back here, they can be working this way where there's no tree issues. You know, that would be the goal, to not be, you wouldn't be doing your work from this side where you're banging up against. Again, we'll work that out with Suzanne.
Yeah, it'd be good to know what type of equipment you're going to be running into the backyard.
Right. It would be like a small stack excavator.
The other thing, too, is just a minor comment, but you're, the silt fence that's shown, really showing one uphill in the backyard, near where your Coltechs are going to be.
Right.
See, right on there? What you really should do is curve that, that silt fence. What you really should do is curve that, that silt fence and run it parallel to the topography, right?
I think, here it's really, I think it's silt fence, I think here they switch the tag to a construction fence, which would indicate the limit of disturbance area, but, you know, we can have.
Which my tail is so that you're running parallel to there.
Not, not stopping any runoff.
No.
Can't do anything, you don't go back.
Any other comments? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No?
Well, I think John's just responding to those and talking to Suzanne then.
Yeah, we'll try to get back to that.
Get that cleaned up and take it from there.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item is twenty nineteen dash oh six Andrew and Jamie Tobias, thirty-one, hardly at West.
It's not in this file. Yes, perfect, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tony Joffrey. I'm a member of the law firm, Tony and Fader, four forty-five Hamilton Avenue, White Plains, New York, on behalf of the applicants. With me exceeding support application is Ubudah Dala from Hudson Engineering. This application seeks to legalize some patio, new patio areas, walkways, and a fence on the existing premises. The, there's a nineteen ninety-two survey that's a part of the Village Records, which demonstrates a certain amount of work that was legal at the time. There was some work that was done by the owner prior to the applicant's acquisition of the property in two thousand, two thousand seventeen, and there was some minor work that was done after the applicant acquired the premises. So, we're seeking to legalize portions of a walkway, potential patio or walkway, and scoring off of the driveway as part of this application.
Were those, so were the walkways done by the previous owner or were they done by the new owner?
As part of your package is kind of a snapshot history, so this is what is demonstrated in the Village Records on, on the left.
Excuse me, I think I take the mic.
So, this diagram here on the left demonstrates the survey that's in the Village Records as of nineteen ninety-two. The middle diagram demonstrates the work that was done by the previous owner as of the closing, which was in two thousand seventeen, which had some additional areas here. There was patios and walkways around the home as well as expansions here. What is demonstrated here are the additional work that was done by the current applicant that's before you, as well as just the squaring off of the driveway in this area here. The work that was done by the applicant that's before you was about three hundred and eighty-seven square feet of additional coverage.
Any comments from any members of the board? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No? I don't think they had any comments. Do you have to go to ZBX?
Yes.
All right. Come back and, is there anything, Ed, I'm seeing you.
Not very from ZB yet because of.
The, the coverage numbers?
Not so much the coverage numbers, there's, there's the Broadway buffer that we all missed. There's such few little things.
Oh, which portion is within the buffer?
Because fifty feet. The property line, so, yeah, so, yeah, maybe even a piece of patio.
So, would that be a variance from the zoning board?
Yeah.
So, we can request those variances from the zoning board and we did receive the HAN memo this afternoon, which we can address those comments before we come back to you.
We're, we're going to struggle right in the, the denial letter without the documents. That's the only thing.
So.
You may want to make a change or two. Is the, the aqueduct's not on the other side, is it?
What do you mean?
The aqueduct's not on the west side of the property. There's no house there.
Have the dock be on the west?
Yeah, that's something. So, then they have the side yard off the walkway on the side, that's be four feet from the property line, so it's not, so you need a rear yard and a side yard for that as well. Um, you want to prove it subject to, but we have to get the plans.
What is the resolution?
Yeah.
And you, and you're saying you don't have.
I just want to make sure.
The final site plan.
Today. We have the, the subplans we need to.
Okay, so.
May I recommend that we revise the plans with him to, to Mr. Mann, receive the denial go, the zoning board of appeals. We, I think we could do that in, in, in short order and then come back to this board with the final plans.
Do you have a problem with that? I think it's a minor, but it's just not, I think we're okay with doing that.
Okay.
Yeah?
I can get it to George.
Absolutely.
Email the doggy, oh, wait.
Okay.
Email the doggy, get it on then. So, who's that?
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Next item is twenty nineteen dash oh five John and Stacy Tunis, twenty-eight South Cut Net Street.
Hi, John Tunis.
Before we start talking, take your microphone, please.
Sure. I guess we need a, a board. I'm John Tunis, this is John Power.
I'm John Power.
Can you speak up, please? John Tunis and.
John Power.
If both of you are going to speak, why don't you take the sort of microphone still? All right, so, because our minutes are verbatim, so it could make sure that.
So, what we're proposing to do is enlarge front entrance to our house, repurpose the garage that's never held a car, and enlarge the bedroom off the front of the house and create a new balcony above existing space in the back of the house.
So, similar to what your neighbor two, the left, you, your second floor, you, you then project your second floor out, right, to bring it even with the rest of the house? Like that, that one window on the right now is set back, the other two windows.
That, that's correct, because in that, in that bedroom, um, as you approach the street side of the bedroom, the roof comes down, so the closets are too low and it really, it's dead space, so we just want to raise it up and, and make it into a more usable bedroom.
And what you have now as an entryway, you're going to make, well, the entry is sort of inside the living space, right?
The, the entry currently is, is built outside, like, outside the house.
Okay.
And it's too small, so if you're carrying a bag or, you know, you can't enter the house easily without putting things down and opening and closing doors. So, we just want to enlarge it so that, you know, one or two people could, um, enter into the house with bags, hang up a coat, and then into the house. And it's also going to have an overhang that extends out about, is it three or four feet?
Four feet.
Four feet, so that there's a roof to protect you if it's raining or snowing.
And you're not going to enclose that anytime in the future, are you?
No, no intention to do that.
Because you're going to need a front, a front yard setback variance.
Yeah.
Because you're projecting out into it and noticing that the houses are all tight there and, I mean, some project farther out.
Mm-hmm.
Towards the street than yours, but this is going to be then coming closer to the street again, so.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that in the existing, the survey and the, and this plot, this, this entire front of the house doesn't comply. Uh, and as I was looking, most of the three, the three houses that are on that street that are of the similar scale are probably the same designer, made some variations along. But the historically significant home on the right of this property is even much closer, right on the, you know, than this even, than this portion wind up being, so. The streetscape is definitely not compromised or, or encroached upon based on what they will provide it here.
Any comments from any members of the board?
Yes. I, I, I have an idea what it's going to look like from the side, but you didn't present what it's going to look, at least I didn't see it, uh, what the roof line would look like from the side of the house.
This roof line of the front of the house or, or the back of the house?
If you look at it from this side, where the work, the side that the work is going to, where you're pushing it out two feet and you're changing the roof, what, what will it look like from the side?
If you want an elevation on the north side.
If it's north, yeah, well, you could tell me, I don't, I'm not going to make you go.
Well, it'll be similar to the other side. It's, it'll be somewhat symmetrical. The slope, the slope will be, this entire roof right now will be in the same plane.
Oh, okay, that, that's difficult, the way you have it presented there, it was difficult to visualize what was going on.
Okay. I was kind of illustrating the dotted line where the existing rake, we call them rake.
So, it's going to look the same as the south side.
Neighboring house, or, or it's the south side, right? All those three houses have particularly different details. In this particular house, they chose to do a little mini gable that.
It looked like it was going to come down and do that.
Oh, okay.
The way it was, if you look at it quickly, I didn't think it was going to do that because why would you do that? But it, the appearance of the way it's presented, it came down and then the new part comes out, but it's.
Well, I'll do something to the drawing to maybe make that clear. It will, that elevation will show up in the, the building construction drawings, yeah.
Sorry, what'd you say?
It will be beyond the board.
Any other comments?
No.
Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No? I think if you just respond to these comments.
Yes, I got these this afternoon.
Then come back next month and then you should be ready to go to the ZB.
This is the first time I'm presenting anything at, at the, the village town of Arlington, so there's some discrepancies in the figures I filled out in the form and my understanding perhaps of structure, coverage, FAR. According to my filling out of the, the detail, it's the applica, uh, application data sheet, I see figures there that are not consistent with the letter I got, so I'd like to understand those and respond.
I think I, then you should speak to.
I spoke to somebody at HAN today.
You did, okay.
And then we'll, we'll go through point by point.
Okay, and then we'll see you next month and then you should, if you address all these other issues, you should go on to the ZB. Okay?
Thank you.
Go for it, Lawrence and Nancy Vlanki, fifty-five Station Road.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Costa. I represent Lawrence and Nancy Vlanki, the owners of fifty-five Station Road. Uh, I received HAN's comments today, but I did not have a chance to address them, but I went through them. I really don't see any issue in addressing them and putting the details that are required on the plans. We will need a variance because we're over on existing coverage. In this application, we're removing the existing patio and deck and replacing it with a deck that covers a little bit more than thirty square feet of the existing coverage. That's the variance that we're going for. Tonight, I'd still like to request since it's a minimal, um, coverage, if we can go to the zoning board and then come back once I have addressed all the issues on HAN's comments, which are basically mainly details, they're not really questioning the footprint or the, the only variance required is the thirty-three square feet. As far as setbacks and all, it meets this, the code.
Are the numbers okay, George and Ed, for the, the coverage in the FA? On the FA, you cover the coverage?
The existing coverage is fourteen twenty-four and a one F five, and we're increasing it by thirty-three square feet.
But then we just, we, we always want to make sure that.
Correct.
Everything is, is jives before you go on to the, the ZB.
Okay.
So, so you don't, you're not giving them information that we don't.
Correct.
Okay, so Doug's comments are, we're not sure if all, all the air conditioning or the chemical equipment, walks and walls are included in coverage.
All the walks and walls are, the existing structure is all on there. The only thing that I don't have on there is the air conditioning equipment, which I can put in, but that could be another nine square feet.
Yeah, it's, it's, just double check if you can mark the coverages on there and I'll do this one. And get it to me before Friday.
Absolutely.
Is there any problem?
Nope.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you next month.
Yes.
Lawrence, are any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter?
Mr. Wallace?
I think it's going to be a beautiful deck for me to use.
Mary, we've got, Ed, we've gotten, Sarah, we've gotten a letter from, um.
Historical.
No.
It's a C, uh, C B R E. The advi, uh, consultants for T-Mobile.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm so, sort of, they call me Nick, I, I, my, my concern is if we respond and it is referred to the plan, where I would like to mention that in our response.
Okay.
I noticed there was one added antenna, but I'm not sure, but it's still the same criteria of coming to the sport.
All right.
With the new FCC laws.
We have that.
So, this, this is from Rob G. S. Bridge.
Can I have a motion?
This is a very preliminary.
Yeah, yeah, it looked like there were two, there were two antennas on one structure and then, and then they were going to replace that and put a third one on.
And that third one is, is why I sent it to Dick, just for a preliminary comment.
Make sure.
Yeah. I, I don't want to say historically it's correct and then have the assumption that it's, it's a routine permit, not a clinical application. That's my concern.
All right, so Dick.
Well, now, sure, Dick will get back.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?